I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Are we three amigos this morning? Are the other two not coming or what's the story?
I haven't heard. So at this point in time, this is the time and place for the meeting. I guess we'll wait and see if they come, but for right now, we're going to move forward.
If you will be here.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Auditor. Today is Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. It's 8:30. Happy Flag Day. Routine business, you can see your reports in the share file. I need board action to approve the consent agenda items. Do I have a motion?
Sir, may we approve the agenda?
We, yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll say move.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We've got an agenda. Thank you, Sean, for the save. We've got a consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. Opportunity for public comment. I see there is some public here today. Would any of you like to comment at this time? Okay, seeing none or hearing none, are there any commissioners who would like to make a report at this time?
The Marvitski Airport, I believe that they're having a fly-in this Saturday, June 18th. I know in the past, they've done some things with a pancake feed. I know they have some speakers lined up, so would obviously encourage those that are willing to basically have some time to go on out there and enjoy the atmosphere and so forth.
This Wednesday, we have a Southeast District meeting in Menno. And for the public, what that's all about is we have quarterly meetings when our commissioners and auditors and treasurers and register of deeds and sheriffs and highway departments get together on eight counties and discuss issues that are common to them and common to all of us. And we have our state director comes down and gives us a report on such things as highways and legislation that is pending and things like that. So it's rather educational. We have some times we have good attendance and sometimes it's rather spotty. But anyway, Wednesday, we'll be meeting in Menno, South Dakota.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other reports, we'll move on to regular business. First item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a petition to vacate the highway. Sean, do you want to read that?
This is a public hearing to consider a petition to vacate the following described highway. The west 36 feet, more or less, of said street lying adjacent to the north line of Lot 6, Block 2, and the south line of Lot 4, Block 4, both within the plant of the Meadows at Spring Creek addition, as filed in Book T of Platts, page 10.
Are the petitioners present and would they like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of the Meadows at Spring Creek Road District. My name is A.J. Swanson. My address is 27452, 482nd Avenue, Canton, and I am an attorney and am representing the Meadows today. The Meadows is about a 20-plus-year-old development at the corner of 4, my goodness, I shouldn't have done this without writing it down, at the corner of 480 First and 106, County Highway 106. There are 26 homes in the development. I believe the development is fully established. There are no vacant lots. And this effort is to vacate the one through street that moves from east to west called Meadowlark Street. And the proposal is to vacate the westernmost 36 feet of that street. The streets in Meadow, in the Meadow have been blacktopped since shortly after it was built out. In 2020, the residents through their homeowners association and the road district, the road district being the Meadows at Spring Creek Road District formed in 2008 or so, worked together to totally rebuild the overlay or the blacktop on these roads. That was done in 2020 at considerable expense. I think the expense was approaching $190,000, much of which with borrowed money. And now that there is a development to be built apparently immediately to the west, the property owners in the Meadows would simply like to vacate that westernmost 36 feet of Meadowlark. That's an area that while it's in the profile of a road, it has never itself been blacktopped, the western 36 feet, nor was it blacktopped in the last work in 2020. One thing we did not put in our petition is that the homeowners that abut Meadowlark, or at least the west 36 feet, that would be Colin Adama, who is the president of the road district, he's with me here today, he lives immediately to the south, and a family by the name of Sweater lives immediately to the north, and they have executed quitclaim deeds to the vacated portion, or the area proposed for vacation. Those quitclaim deeds would run in favor of the road district itself so that the road profile would be preserved for eventual occupation or use by the road authority at some point, should it prove to be essential. That's about all I really need to say, I believe, at this point. This is done for purposes of cutting down on more traffic that would move through the development should there be construction further to the west, and that's the reason this petition is brought. Are there any questions?
A.J., sir, we understand. Is that the property 47975? Are those the properties in question?
Yes.
And 4797?
Well, I'm showing it would be 27121.
Okay.
Prairie, Prairie View Avenue would be the north property. That's the Sweater. They basically just have a kissing corner with the west 36 feet. It's not truly abutting. It more abuts the property to the west, I guess, because there's a little dogleg area there. I don't know why it was platted that way, but that's the way it was platted. So the Adamas to the south and the Sweaters to the north have executed quitclaim deeds. We're not prepared to file those yet today because I need certificates of real estate value and so forth. And a check, of course, to cover the filing fee.
Again, how many properties does this affect?
Well, it directly affects two, the Sweater property and the Adama property. And I base that, the quitclaim deed being appropriate, based on the statute 11317, I believe it is, which basically says when a platted street is vacated, the abutting properties are entitled to enclose the vacated area of the street. And so rather than carry on some pretense that the owners wish to have it vacated so they can enlarge their yard is not the case. The road district will be the owner of the right of way.
A.J., how many of the residents signed the petition to vacate?
You know, I did submit the petition. There were 26 homes, and I believe 22 of them signed. So it wasn't 100%, but I think we hit 90%. And I think that's all that's required is a majority under 11-3, if I'm not mistaken.
I think you only need two people, don't you?
Well, to initiate the petition, yes. Yeah.
But I think my point is 90% of the people signed the petition, and it shows that the community, there's community support for the action, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Swanson?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swanson.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the action?
Colin Adama, 47975 Meadowlark Street. I'd like to stand in support of this petition. So as the HOA Road District and President of the Meadows represent those 26 homeowners, 22 of which signed in support of this, as well as being a resident of Lincoln County and this area, this petition, I think, is a win for all of us as it maintains the safety of our private streets and allows the residents to walk, bike, travel to and from their homes without the unwanted through traffic coming through and keeping that to the outside arterial streets. It also protects the investment that our HOAs made to their private road and maintenance of that. This petition also helps keep the identity and safety of the surrounding area intact. There are numerous individual HOAs that exist side by side without any road connections between them, always connecting out to the arteries. So that is kind of the status quo. So it's, I think, a win for the future neighborhood to the west as well, as they'll see their local traffic, much like the rest of us, and establish their HOA in the future and a road district. I presume that is in the plans. I think the emergency and 911 safety is also a non-issue in terms of safety, as again, this is kind of the norm for the area. There's lots of circles always cutting out as there has existed for 20 years. And right now, it ends in an alfalfa field, so nothing really comes from that direction now. So for our immediate safety, it's really a non-issue there. Once the finalized plans of the new development are vetted and completed, I think it'll be even more of a non-issue as their new neighborhood will, has just recently been rezoned and would all line up with this exit. They'll rearrange theirs and they'll be in good shape there as well. One option, I just wanted to mention too, that if this were to be approved, we would be working with that developer. There was some suggestions of maybe a non-vehicular connection there, which would make sense. So there would be even more safe walking for kids, bikes, those kind of things, just not having traffic shooting straight down that runway essentially. That's going to run parallel to 271 because we know 271 is busier and busier, and we just like to keep the traffic out there. So I'd like to thank, in closing here real quick, Toby in Planning and Zoning for suggesting this. He brought this up in one of our roundtables as we were working through from last summer till now with the new development. So you guys have heard about this before, I think back in May and before too. Also thank A.J. for helping us through and as well as Commissioner Aaronz for his suggestions there. So appreciate the discussions and time. Look forward to your votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adama. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Okay, seeing none. I'll now close the floor to testimony and open up the petition for action by the commissioners.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would vote for the approval of the abandonment of this particular road or street that is in question.
We've got a motion to grant the petition. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and second to grant the petition. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Next issue, got a fireworks permit to discuss. Mr. Timmerman.
This is an annual permit that's filed by Mr. Mark Foster up in Lincoln Lakes. He is very careful about how he does things, and at this point in time, we have no big concern about fire danger because we've had plenty of rain and so forth. If we do have conditions changed before he would do his fireworks, I ask him to have some people on site that can control things, namely Harrisburg Fire, coordinate with the fire chief there and Mr. Foster so they can make arrangements to have suppression on site if they need it. Other than that, it should be a normal application and shouldn't have an issue with being approved. Any questions you might have for me?
How many years has he done this, Harold?
Oh, it's been several. I don't know the exact number.
Quite a few.
Yeah. So he, there has been some times when there's been a big concern about fire danger, and we've addressed those with him, and he's willing to comply with our suggestions and so forth.
When will he let you know? July 1st or 2nd?
I don't know that he will. It's one of those two dates. You know, it doesn't matter a whole lot which one it is. And like I said, if we do have concern about fire and that sort of thing, we'll coordinate with Harrisburg Fire, and they'll bring like maybe a Type 6 grass fighting unit out there.
Thank you, Harold. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Is, would anybody like to make a motion on the?
I'll move to grant the application for the fireworks display.
Got a motion to grant? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and second to grant the permit. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. Thank you.
I have two items for you this morning. First action is board action on a joint powers agreement with Dakota Steel and Trim for doing some base stabilization on three miles of county gravel road. I think this is something I brought before you before. So I know that Leonard got ahold of me, Leonard Deckardhead, and said to move forward with this. So had the state's attorney draw up the agreement, and they got it signed, so just looking for you guys' approval on this. Again, he's going to be doing a 30% cost share on this project, so total cost should be around $90,000, so he'll have about $30,000, and we'll have $960 to pay, so.
Isn't that something also that was in question by some of the landowners around there from the amount of transportation or trucks that were coming and going, and he agreed to this, you know? So?
Yeah, this is something that he had brought up to me. He came forth to me to wanting to do, I think this is back when he was trying to do a rezone on some property.
Yeah, on some.
So, but he, and then even after that failed, or he pulled his application for that, he came to me and said that he still wanted to move forward with it, so.
Would that be done yet this year, Terry?
Yeah, in fact, if we get it signed today, I can let the contractor know because I believe he'll be mowing back in on Thursday this week. He's got a couple township, a couple miles for a township to do, and then he'll be doing us. So should probably be next week, maybe.
Are you looking for a motion today?
Yes. Well, I'll need, I'll need the board to, I'll need the approval and the chair to execute the agreement. So I have an agreement for you. It's in the packet.
Ready.
So.
I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Chair, if you're asking for one.
Yep.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second to approve the cost share agreement between Lincoln County and Dakota Steel and Trim. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. Thank you, Terry.
Next item I have is looking for approval to purchase a laptop with software for truck and equipment diagnostics. So I guess the reason that we're looking to do this, a lot of times, you know, with all these newer vehicles and equipment, you have codes that come up, engine codes, whether it's engine braking and such, and every time a code comes up, we've got to bring it up to the dealer to have them either clear the code or find out what's wrong with it. And sometimes that's, that means bringing a truck up three times before they can actually, the code is actually stuck in there enough to where they can read that there's an issue. So what this will do is this is going to help us to do more diagnostics in-house and hopefully be bringing less of it up to the dealers to have work done. So the price on this is $6,420.40. Again, that comes with the laptop, comes with all the cords, and it's also a three-year warranty on the battery on the laptop. So I guess one thing I did not put on here is, is there is a yearly fee, but again, you know, I think it's $1,900 or something like that to keep this updated, you know, in the system because they're adding equipment, adding, adding things into the system all the time. So they'd keep us updated on all the issues that would come about with other equipment and stuff. So I guess I'm looking today for, you know, since this is over $5,000, I'll be looking for approval to make this purchase. I should say that I did get pre-approved from IT since it is computer stuff and, you know, they're all right with it, so.
Is there a local dealership or representation? I mean, I know this is a company out of North Carolina.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's a local, but this is the local salesman that got ahold of us or that we got ahold of through, through somebody else that a guy out there, one of the mechanic guys out the shop knows. And again, you know, we're just trying to do more of the stuff in-house, you know, because eventually when I get to hire a mechanic back, that person is going to be using this all the time, so.
Well, with the price of fuel, any unnecessary travel with one of those big trucks, Terry, would certainly behoove that. But if you're able to do that all yourself, that's going to be a good cost saving.
Yes.
Take less time away from the truck, you'll have more access, more usable time, stuff like that.
Yeah, and a lot of these items that are, that are going out or going bad are sensors and stuff like that, and it'll tell us which one it is, tells us where it's located on the engine or on the, in the dash, and then we just go purchase it from the dealer and then we install it. So, and if it needs to be programmed, we can do it with this, this computer, so.
Gentlemen, what are your wishes?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the purchase of the computer for the highway department truck.
Do we have a second?
As requested by our highway superintendent.
Okay. Got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and second, purchase laptop, laptop software for truck and equipment diagnostics. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Mr. Rambo, proof of lease modification for alfalfa grounds.
Good morning, Commissioners. So just pretty simple. We have the 12 acres of alfalfa ground at the Lennox 4H facility, and it is currently being leased to the Han Brothers. And as part of the dirt removal project that we did last summer, we had to find a place to stockpile the soil that was peeled off the top, and we ended up going into that area. So I need to modify that by a full acre because we basically absorbed that back for that pile of dirt. In addition to that, I just want to plant the seed for next year, pending on the success of the tractor pull that they're wanting to do out there for the Lennox 4H, or July 4th, they kind of like to move it out to that field. So we might be absorbing more of that acreage next year. So I kind of wouldn't mind looking at the, approaching the Han Brothers and saying, maybe you could pay it next year, but not basically ask them to, to pay us so they could get some benefit from it, but we could have more flexibility on the use of it. The current lease gives me quite a bit of flexibility to make the determination, but it's, to be fair to the Han Brothers, I don't, I want to go into the beginning of the season before they fertilize it and everything, and then we turn around and disrupt it.
So what exactly are you asking for?
So for sure, I have to modify the lease to 11 acres from the current 12. They, we've already made the modification, so they paid for 11 acres because that was already done prior to the growing season. So I want that officially modified, and then whether I come back to approach you again next year about an additional modification, or we just go ahead and give them notice that we will pull, pull them out of the lease for starting next season, the 23 season.
Do we have a motion to that extent, gentlemen?
May I please ask a question?
Yes.
Sir, okay. Is this for, so we need to subtract an acre for 22 and 23?
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it's 11 acres then, basically?
Yes.
At $100.02?
An acre, yes, yes.
And that 2 cents. I'll so move.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second to modify the agreement. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. Thank you. Next agenda item. Sean, do you want to introduce that?
Yes, sir. So April 12th, 2022, we chose American Engineering Testing from three proposals to complete the necessary testing and sampling for this year's AIP grant. And now we have the agreement for that work. This is covered under the Already Approved and Applied For AIP Grant 346007802022. The requested action is to approve and authorize the chair to execute the proposal for geotechnical services for the Lincoln County GA Apron Reconstruction Project for the Marvitski Lincoln County Airport not to exceed $8,360 from American Engineering Testing.
We have a motion to that extent?
I'll so move.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve and authorize chair to execute proposal for geotechnical services. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Board action to declare surplus. Three tax deed parcels from our auditor.
Yep, we've got three tax deed parcels that are in Hudson. Carter's going to pull them up here on the overhead. But we need to do the three things. We need to declare and remove them from surplus, appoint three landowners to appraise them, and then authorize auditor to advertise for bids. So it's all three of those parcels that are right there together, the one that he's highlighted on and the two next to it, I believe.
Sure. Who's maintaining them right now? Do we go down and, are they covered with weeds or? Do we go down and, are they covered with weeds or all kinds of underbrush or?
I don't know that we maintain them.
Oh.
And a lot of our tax deed parcels, I don't think we maintain them.
Okay, so it's just, they're there, make it.
Mm-hmm.
Wildlife refuge.
So, and these became tax deed parcels because the owner didn't pay the property tax on them?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then we take them over here through this action and then what happens next?
So, we have possession of them and then we can surplus them and sell them.
Okay.
So, we've got the, I think their quitclaim is attached to the agenda that we processed on it.
How much, how much land are we, are, much of Hudson are we talking about? Lots? I mean, we got, how much?
I think you could probably get, I mean, if you look at that, you could, there's two lots next to it. I mean, it's three lots total.
Okay.
Of various sizes, so that's why.
You know, the goofy part about it is their commissioner is to the north. There's no through street there. See that?
Yeah.
You know, you're kind of.
That's why I'm locked.
Yeah.
Okay, gentlemen.
We need three. Paul, would your brother consider doing that?
Okay, so, let's do the declare of surplus and remove it from inventory first for the three parcels.
I also moved a declared surplus, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and second to declare the said parcels as surplus. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
The next action we need to take is to appoint an appraisal committee for said parcels. Are there any volunteers?
Well, it's my district, so I'll volunteer.
When does this need to be done by Sherry?
I would like to do the advertisement, um, to be read at, or to be due at ten AM. So, then the briefing for, or the appraisal forms would need to be in the office by five PM on July seventh.
Well, I got, I gotta go.
Five PM when?
July seventh.
July seventh. I got to go down to my mother-in-law's house, so, uh, put me on there.
Okay.
I, and since these two, I'll go down and, uh, you've got it made. Is that, uh, do we have to, wait a minute, do we have to publish that if three of us,
You won't go down there together, will you?
Pardon?
You won't go down there together, will you?
No, no.
I don't think that's what he was suggesting.
No, I, I mean.
Jim, if you want to go to my mother-in-law's house, we can.
Are you in good standing? That's what I worry about.
Yeah. I hope so.
We won't throw you under the bus, too bad.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to appoint, uh, Aaron Schmidt and Gibbon to the appraisal committee?
I also move.
Second.
Got a motion and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Okay, the third action is we need to authorize a request for sealed bids for the said parcels to occur on the said date and time, uh, as the documents state in your packet. Is there a motion to that extent?
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second.
Got a motion and second to authorize request for sealed bids. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next issue, request for exception to hiring policy, and I am going to ask for an executive session, uh, under SDCL one-dash-twenty-five-dash-two, sub-one. Is there a motion to that extent?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second. Got a motion and second to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Before you guys go in there, I'm trying to get something scheduled. The meeting that we were going to have to go over to look at the bank building, are you guys still on board for that?
Yes.
Can we do it both?
I'm trying to get out of it. I'm trying to get him to come down earlier. So, that's where I'm, that's where I'm at right now.
Appraisal forms?
But you'd be willing to wait a little bit for him to drive down here? A little bit, yeah, that's.
Okay. I'm not quite sure if I know where that property is.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second to come out of executive session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
All right, we're back into regular business now and it was on the agenda, number eight for requ- uh, sheriff has made a request for exception to hiring policy and, uh, so we've had some discussion on this topic, but now there will be some, uh, discussion here in, uh, in public about this matter. Go ahead, Sheriff.
Thank you. So, what I'm asking is we have liked to extend an offer to an applicant for our administrative assistant position in the sheriff's office that is currently open. The hiring policy allows department heads to offer a job up to a step five. I would like to ask for an exception to that policy and offer this person the position at a step six, which, uh, the step five is eighteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. The step six would be nineteen dollars and forty-five cents per hour.
Is there a motion to that extent?
Mr. Chair, uh, after discussion, I would move to accept the, um, our recommendation and the request from our sheriff's department for the, uh, step move from step five to step six.
Is there a second to that effect?
I'll second it.
It's a motion and second to deviate from the, uh, hiring policy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there a need for any other executive sessions at all? Okay, um, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adj- or, excuse me.
The three of us are going to tour the bank building across the street, um, at ten o'clock and so, there'll be three of us there, but we won't be discussing any, uh, county business. So, we're allowed to be in the same area as each other as long as we're not discussing any county business. So, I guess at this time, I will, um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I also move.
Second.
Got a motion and second to adjourn, any discussion?